Hello everyone, joining me for my opinion piece on July 27th, 2020 Board of Supervisors Meeting. Today is Friday, the day, the Friday right after this meeting. I just want to share some of my opinions with you. And before I start, I want to emphasize that everything I say from this point on is strictly my opinion and only my opinion. Even though some of the things may be facts that I discuss, they are my opinions. So what I'd like to do is start off today about this meeting. It was another meeting that is an example of poor planning and poor management. This is at least consistent in every meeting that they hold. You will discover if you watch the video of the meeting, there's more than one incident where there's complete silence for a long period of time. And this occurs for various reasons, I'm not going to go into them. But at the very start, 10 minutes into the meeting, there's silence for two minutes. Something happened to the audio during the discussion on the disbursements. So you're left sitting there watching your computer screen with virtually nothing going on. This happens later on as well with the connection with the attorney who has been hired to handle the noise ordinance. He wasn't able to connect or lost connection or went silent for a rather lengthy time. So this is a type of thing that the new township manager should be working on and making sure that everything runs smoothly. That's part of his job. He has many, many hats he needs to wear. And I'm not sure he's figured out how many hats he has to wear yet. But this is one of the things that he should do is to make sure that this meeting runs smoothly. Make sure that the supervisors are prepared with all the information that they need to discuss the items on the agenda. And I'll expand on these things at a later date as well. Also during this presentation, this meeting, they, they arrive at the agenda item for the noise ordinance. And it's interesting because they haven't done this before, but they played the public comment prior to discussing this particular agenda item. They didn't do it for all the public comments, but just for these specific ones. And I'm wondering, they, this was a departure from their usual practice, but I'm, I'm questioning, why don't they do that for all the public comments? Identify what the public comment is about and play it before the agenda item is discussed. So that it's right there, it's fresh in the supervisor's minds. And they won't forget to address the issue if they, if they care at all to answer the public comment that's being presented to them. Because what happens often is we'll say our, our public comment at the beginning of the meeting, they'll completely, they'll say, oh, we're going to talk about that later on. And then they completely fail to address the person's public comment. It goes unnoticed. So also overall, overall in this meeting, our public, our township had at least some wins. And the first win, and I'm ecstatic about this, is that they fired Fox Rothschild, okay? And they hired a Berks County law firm. Now I'm ecstatic that they fired Fox Rothschild. In my opinion, they're a third-rate law firm. And what they've been doing is using our township to train their young attorneys. And we've been paying a hefty price for that. As most of you should know, we, we paid Fox Rothschild somewhere around a million dollars or more to handle this liquor license debacle, which John Crusades is one of the primary people responsible for it. And he will, he'll take, he'll take credit for everything else, but he won't take credit for that. But they were involved in it. It was a liquor license issue that could have been settled within a month. It was very simple. All that we needed to do was hire all the bar staff on the extra township payroll and then just send a bill to Viva. But they wanted to complicate things because it was their intent, in my opinion, that they wanted to kick Viva out for obvious reasons. But Fox and Rothschild is gone. I think that anyone in Berks County should beware and take a lesson from us about what happened. The new law firm, by the way, is Hartman, Valeriano, McGovern, Lutz, okay? And they actually specialize in municipal government, where I don't know what we were getting from Fox and Rothschild. And there's an interesting story behind how they came to this township. But again, that's something at this time I simply can't discuss. But I've met Hartman, Valeriano, McGovern and Lutz when I sat in with the classes that the Excellence in Government organization affiliated with Albright College put, put on for newly-elected supervisors. No, I'm not a newly-elected supervisor, but I paid my class fee and they kindly allowed me to sit in on the meetings. And this is the law firm that's associated with excellence in government. So I think there's some controls on this law firm. They're not going to go rogue on us like Fox and Rothschild has done. So I see potentially good things in this area. I, I spoke with some of their lawyers and they were very nice. They were very kind. They were very approachable. So that's one win, win for us. And thank, a big shout out thank you to Michelle Kircher and Joe Stopp, who were the two that did the preliminary investigations on quite a few law firms that applied for the job. And even Fox and Rothschild reapplied. They still wanted to be our solicitor. Can you believe that? But fortunately, the board came to their senses and they voted four to one on getting rid of Fox and Rothschild and having a new solicitor law firm. That one vote against, of course, was John Crusades. So he's going to lose someone, someone who supports his antics and his obviously strange behavior over the years. And if you haven't guessed, we've had to put up with this guy for over four years. He was appointed to the board, I believe, on January 8th, 2016. I'm sorry, February 8th, 2016. And this February, it was four years. So he's almost approaching four years and six months, creating havoc and terrible damage to this township. So the other thing that was announced in the department reports by our township manager was that apparently they received information of allegations of criminal conduct have been made against a current supervisor. And that supervisor has asked the township to provide legal representation. Well, I could give you some advice. Fox and Rothschild is, is available, although I reconsider that since they lost every lawsuit they, every major lawsuit that they represented us in. So they voted four to one to give whoever this person is, because this person didn't identify themselves, four to one to provide that legal representation. The, the no vote was Mrs. Kircher. And so the four boys, the boys' club, they voted to give someone the representation they asked for. Obviously, it probably wasn't Miss Kircher because she wouldn't have voted no to not give herself representation. So that kind of give you a clue, there's only, there's only four boys left that, it's one of them. And you might remember that in January at the Township Board of Supervisors Meeting that they held at the library, after the reorg meeting, the solicitor for Fox and Rothschild announced that the district attorney's office is opening up an investigation on the board of supervisors. So now we have that investigation going on. And now we have another allegation of criminal, criminal, what do they call that? Allegations of criminal conduct. So that's, that's going to be another one. And if you haven't seen that video, it's on exeterunited.com. You will not find it on Exeter Township's website. They held it in the library and they were, claimed they, they couldn't record it. This opinion piece that I'm presenting you is recorded on my iPhone 11 Pro. So you can see with a, a simple smartphone, it records very well. And I recorded a lot of the meetings and they come across very, very well. So we also had some, some losses as a public. For example, the board decided that they were going to vote and extend their meetings to the internet for quite some time now, I believe through October. And this is, you know, going to prevent us from, from ever attending these meetings for quite a long time. They feel safe behind the internet. And as long as they can keep the public at bay, I think they're going to continue to do it until they're forced not to do it. And I don't know, I could go to a barber shop, I could get a haircut. I could go to the grocery store and I could shop. I could even go to a, get a manicure at the nail salon. I could get a massage if I want to. I can even go into the Exeter diner with a group of my friends and sit there and have a meal. But for some reason, our elected officials have decided they can't hold a meeting for the public at the running country club where it is a huge space. They could certainly practice the distancing that everybody's talking about. They can all wear face masks. All they need to do is make sure they have a proper amplification. And you can rent that. I know it's not impossible to do. And the cost of cleaning it for one, for two meetings a month is, is a poor excuse for not allowing the public to participate in these meetings. And they'll continue to push us off as long as they can. Finally, the, the other reason is the public doesn't have to attend. They, they should still, you know, do it on the internet, but also have an open meeting with the public at the same time. I think the county commissioners are recommending that they do that in the future. When they go to regular meetings, they're still going to transmit on the internet. So the thing is, the public, if they're scared, they, they don't have to attend. They can watch it on the internet. But it should be available for those of us who are willing to go to the meeting and sit in that room and hear the discussions, see the interactions, and be able to participate in our local government. So that's, that's an issue that is dear to my heart. Also, another issue, the Communications Committee, okay? Oh boy, I'll tell you. If, if, if it wasn't for wasting money, I, this wouldn't be so bad. But they're going to waste money to send postcards out to everyone in the, in the township, letting them know that they're going to start sending newsletters by email. Okay, well, I have a problem with that. First of all, why not just send the actual newsletter out to each resident so that they can get the very first newsletter? And with a notation at the very top that says, "This is the last newsletter you'll receive by mail." That from now on, you'll be getting an email. "Make sure you register your email address with us," is one way to do it. Some of them won't have emails perhaps, so they're going to have to get a paper letter anyway. That needs to be addressed. And finally, I had an issue with it where I don't want to sign up for this email. I don't want them to send me an email newsletter every month. I'd like to see it on the website, the $60,000-plus website that we've paid for. And so I mentioned that to Joe Stopp and Joe, Joe reacted very quickly. He said, Lori Getz, hey, why, why can't we have the newsletter? Dave's got a great idea. Why can't we have the newsletter on, on the website? Now, this is common sense. That's a no-brainer. But they weren't, they were not putting it on the website. They wanted to force everybody to give them their emails. So now it's on the website. And you know, the website for looking for anything that you want to find, it's like the, the shell game. You've got three shells and you have to figure out what shell the pea is under. And that's the same way with all these other things. But at least I could go read the newsletter for this month. And then I can look at the previous newsletters if I missed something or I wanted to refresh my memory. And I don't have to jam up my email, right? It's common sense. Now what's happened here also, I want you to pay attention to this. Mr. Crusades interjected that he has a friend that will handle postcards because he does work for him. And he wants to know, well, how much is it going to cost? And, and Lori Getz said, well, we've got offers for $1,100, $1,200. And so he's going to go talk to his friend about doing this. Now, I'd like to suggest, Mr. Crusades, you stop that nonsense. It's not your job to do that kind of work. That's what we have a staff for. That's what we have a township manager for. That's why he's getting paid $120,000 a year to do. And now that you've tainted the waters here, we really can't hire that guy because you have a conflict of interest. And you like to do that, don't you? You like to interject, give your friends a, a contract to do the work, just like you've done with some other instances I won't mention right now. But it's obvious, it's being noticed. And if anyone from the township watches this opinion piece, you need to stop him from, and, and the board from giving this person the contract to do the postcards. Don't do the postcards. Send out a newsletter to everyone in the township. That's adequate. You know, so stop wasting taxpayers' money is what I'd like to say. So I'd also like to comment about Mr. Spees as the chairman of the board. Every meeting that he's been involved in since he's been the chairman, there's been some issue that you could point to and say, he doesn't know what he's doing. And when he gets confused or lost, he look, he looks to the worst person he could look to, John Crusades. Now, the last board meeting, the last board that we had in there, you could see all the strings coming from people to the puppet master. And the puppet master then was Granger, John Granger, and of course, John Crusades. So now Crusades is the only puppet master. And you can see the strings that he's pulling on Dave Spees. Spees doesn't know what to do unless John Crusades tells him what to do. So when you hear the name Spees or Crusades, I want you to think corruption. That's my opinion on this. Think corruption. So what did he do? What, what was the big mistake he made? Well, you know, through the meeting, when they, when they get to the noise ordinance issue, Mr. Gaultier makes a motion which was incorrect. The motion, and then seconded by Crusades, which made it doubly incorrect. And it was regarding the noise and a motion to schedule for adoption the noise ordinance. So a little bit further into the meeting, Ms. Getz pointed out that, that, that motion that they passed was incorrect. That what it should have done was to advertise for a public hearing for adoption of the noise ordinance. And that public hearing is scheduled for August 10th. So they had to go back and amend the motion. Now generally, you would say, okay, it's just a, you know, simple unintended mistake. But was it really? And why does it happen meeting after meeting after meeting? You have to ask yourself that. Also, newsworthy, they've selected KCBA. No surprise there. I've been predicting it for weeks. They're going to do their thing again and we're going to pay them more money to evaluate the current site and how we can use that. But also to tell us how we could use the promenade in the future, okay? And that's, that's the topic that I'm saving for last. Saving the promenade for last. So you'll find out in this meeting that they're giving the tenants in the main building a 30 days' notice to vacate. And they're also going to go out and get bids to demolish the big building, the main building. This was a shock, that shouldn't be a shock. I've been, I've been saying this for many months, that they're going to demolish the buildings. And this is a big, big mistake, huge mistake. One that's going to cost us potentially tens of millions of dollars. But before we get there, let's talk about something else. That during this discussion with the promenade, and I guess they're using this as the reason to demolish it, is that apparently the, the property is uninsurable. We have no liability or property insurance on the promenade that we bought, okay? None. So I'm wondering, how in the world did we buy a property that's uninsurable? Well, the answer is simple. They paid cash for it. But still, I don't think it's legal for them to use taxpayer money to buy an asset that's uninsurable. I'm not sure why it's uninsurable, but we're going to get to the bottom of it. And demolish it? It's a bad idea. What I would do is I would fix the roof because that's one of the problems with the main building. And then I would do everything I can to remediate the black mold. That's the other issue. Can you imagine going in and eating in a Chinese restaurant and you have black mold in there? Apparently, this is a big problem with the building. And they didn't know about these things when we bought it? We'll find out the answers to those questions. But what I would do is I would fix the roof, remediate the black mold, continue using it to lease out to retail commercial businesses. I would move the administration and engineering to a leased space. There's a lot of cheap commercial floor space that we could lease. I would turn the whole current administration building into the police station. Do the necessary modifications. Whatever it costs, it'll be cheaper than spending 30 or 40 million dollars on the promenade. And we can keep the highway department there. They're, they're starting to shrink because most of the work that they do is contracted out. So it's going to get smaller and smaller there unless we rebuild that department. And, and then there you have it. We have all that covered except the fire department. And, and they're going to have to wait a little bit longer. Because this, this BS that, in my opinion, that Mr. Mascarole has donated a million dollars, that's exactly what it is. It's, it's BS. Because he, he contributed so far $200,000. And he's going to contribute $200,000 for the next four years. So we're not going to get the million together until the end of five years. So we've got five years to plan for this fire station. And all of these things have to be revisited because of COVID-19. If you look at the plans for these fire stations, they've got living accommodations with everybody bunking in one room. Should we be bunking all of these young volunteer firemen in the same room? What if they all come down with COVID-19? So we have to rethink everything that we're doing. The same thing with the administration building. Do we need a big, jomungus administration building with indoor walking trails, swimming pools, gymnasiums, food courts? When what we're going to do is probably limit the number of people that come into the building. They'll have to have an appointment. They have to take their temperature. You'll have to have a mask on. And you're probably the only one who's, who's, has the appointment for that time period. It's going to probably work that way if this continues. So we have, there's nothing wrong with waiting. We need to wait and we need to have answers to our questions. So the other thing is with this, with the store, with the, the retail stores there, they have been led to believe that they're going to be there, that they have a place there. And I say that because, and it's, it's a, they state it in the RFP to the architect. And you'll see it, I think it's on page four, if you go look at it. You can also connect with the RFP on exeterunited.com. I put it there so that you could download it. But they state specifically that they want the architectural firm to incorporate the current retail vendors into their plan. Now, if that isn't a very precise message to the current retail operators there that they're telling them, you're, you're part of this, you're going to be into, into the new design. I think they should bring suit against the township. It's only fair. I'm looking at, I'm, I'm, I want to be fair here. The township promised them. They promoted it. It's very clear. It's, it's not just a pie in the sky thing. They put it in the RFP. So I think that these retail businesses should band together and file suit against Exeter Township. Now, the big problem is, again, no liability insurance. I don't know. I mean, you'll see in the video, Mr. Stopp says, "This is a tremendous liability." You'll see the general manager, the township manager agree and he says it. "Yes, this is a tremendous liability." So what I did was I, I wrote Mr. Bartlett, who's our new township manager, and he sent me back this one or two paragraph comments about trying to make me believe that it's not an issue now. All of a sudden, it's a tremendous liability, but now it's not a big issue because we have umbrella insurance. If anybody knows anything about insurance and about umbrellas, you have to raise your eyes and say, what's he talking about? So, so what I did was I, I went out to some people. I, you know, I've got United, exeterunited.com, which has over 200 members. Some of those members are professional insurance people. So I talked to them and I got a very good education on this. Most of it I knew, but not all of it. So I had them read what Mr. Bartlett sent to me. And he basically said, "There's no problem with liability there. It's just with the stores in the main building." Which doesn't make any sense. But they read it, both of the insurance people I talked to said that what Mr. Bartlett said did not make sense to them. And they said that the stores should have their own liability. That made perfect sense to me. If I had a store there, I would want to have my own liability insurance, right? And, and with that, in most commercial leases, the building owner is named as an additional insured on the store owner's policy. Makes sense so far? So, and this has added a layer of protection for the owner. And who's the owner? Exeter Township, the taxpayers. And then when he mentions in this reply that the detached structures like the Monroe muffler is handled differently because of the umbrella, I guess, both insurance agents told me that that doesn't make sense. It's on the same property. It shouldn't, there's no way that it should be handled differently. So maybe we're missing some information, maybe not. But they said it from their experience and, and both of them have been, I think they're both in their 60s and they, so they have quite a bit of experience in the insurance industry. They just said it doesn't make sense. And so, so Mr. Bartlett offered this excuse that the un- that the umbrella insurance for the township would cover the property. And what I'm told is is that the umbrella insurance typically provides additional liability protection over and above all of the underlying policy liability limits. So in other words, you have to have your regular insurance policy there, and it covers a certain amount of liability. And if it exceeds that amount, then the umbrella kicks in. So you have to have something that is insurable to begin with. I have... Yes, I'd like to review again what I said about the insurance agents that I talked to, because there was a little glitch in my presentation due to an incoming phone call, and I've taken care of that. So as I was talking about this umbrella insurance, it provides additional liability protection over and above all of the underlying policy liability limits. Now, I spoke with one of the commercial businesses in that main building, and I was told that they carry liability insurance. And as I mentioned earlier, usually these liability policies name the owner as a second insurer. So it sounds like these things are covered. So I'm not sure what kind of issue that Mr. Bartlett and the supervisors think they have here. But it all is starting to sound very strange. So, you know, to go on about this umbrella policy. Some umbrella policies will not cover property that is uninsurable. And if they will cover it, there's a big gap in coverage so that if no underlying policy exists, this is a huge gap in coverage between the missing underlying coverage and where the umbrella picks up. So we could be on the hook for millions of dollars and not know about it. I hear Mr. Krasadis is telling everyone that it's okay for third-party individuals and businesses, whoever they might be, to use the promenade property. I think this is improper. And I think he's exceeding his powers to just unilaterally say that that's okay. The whole property should either be closed down or we should have a clear understanding of what the liability issue is. And in talking with the tenants, I understand that the whole building has the black mold problem, only certain areas of it. And that the roof can be replaced. So in the articles in the Redding Eagle and in the Exeter informant, our manager is saying that it would be cost prohibitive to put in a new roof and fix the other mitigating problems. It would be cheaper. It would be too expensive. It's better to bulldoze over the building and then spend tens of millions of dollars to build brand-new buildings. This simply doesn't make sense. I think anyone who has any common sense at all will say, "What are you talking about?" Right? But they go on pushing their agenda, trying to get this built. Why? And the reason why is because of the people that are sitting in the background waiting to get those construction contracts. Now, we know that one of the former supervisors who was appointed, never elected, he ran for election again, and he lost, got five contributors of $1,000 apiece. He probably raised more money than any other candidate. $5,000 to run for a supervisor's position that, I don't know, pays what? $3,000 a year? Something like that? But what you have to do is you have to look at who donated the money to him. Two lawyers from Conshohocken. I looked into those lawyers. In my opinion, it looks like they're representing construction companies. But they also are affiliated with someone that we know who does a lot of business in our community. His trucks are driving around the roads every day. And someone contributed from Birdsboro, who we know is closely associated with this individual. He donated $1,000. And I know people that know him. They tell me he doesn't even have $1,000. So I don't know what's going on here. I think we can guess. But they're trying to get their hands on that $40 million. And I'm telling you, we're going to pay, pay, pay if this happens. We have Mr. Staub talking about refinancing. Typically, refinancing means that they'll also have the opportunity to get more money. They'll probably say, "Well, we need additional money just in case we overrun our budget," which you can count on it. They'll overrun their budget. But back to the current issue. What's going on with these poor vendors at the site? They promised them that they would be there. There was an RFP stipulating that they were supposed to be designed into the new buildings. And they're not, obviously. They're getting kicked out. And there's questions on why Monroe would be any different. And you can read their RFP and their agenda. They don't even spell Monroe correctly. So it's a terrible thing that's going on in this community. And I think everybody needs to start stepping up and asking valid questions. Really, honestly, I want you to consider this. If they're saying that it's cost prohibitive to build and put the new roof on there and fix the few spots where there's black mold, that's too costly. Instead, we need to bulldoze that building and spend tens of millions of dollars on new buildings. So just so you know this. They want the police department to have a separate building. They want the fire department, the fire police, and EMS to share a separate building. So that means a third separate building for administration and engineering and whatever other small departments they have. And then the highway department. And they want the indoor walking path. They want the Olympic-sized swimming pool so that the school district can use it. Right? Like, they don't get enough of our money. And what else do they want? Oh, gyms, gyms all around. Okay, an order for three gyms. Walking paths outside, a food court with at least three or four vendors. This is insane. I mean, they work for us. We need to give them adequate accommodations, but let's not go overboard. And the effects of COVID-19 may change everything. I mean, like I said, I look at this, and I think, well, with the fire department, they've got designs where all the fire volunteers share one-room bunks. And that's not going to fly. If they share one room together in close quarters, the possibility of catching COVID-19 increases. Same thing with the administration building. We should be encouraging more people to work from home. They work from home, you need less space. Not only that, if you're going to do business with the public, it should be on an appointment-only basis so that you don't have people, lots of people coming in and standing around. I can see that being the future if COVID-19 continues to go on. And that means that we need smaller spaces. So it all needs to be rethought. And a lot of people say, and I agree with them, that with the situation right now, this whole thing should be put on hold. There's no reason to move forward this fast. No reason whatsoever. Unless there's somebody behind our supervisors who are pushing it. And I believe that that's the case. Speace and Krasadis are in cahoots with a special interest that wants to see that $40 million transferred from our pocket into other people's pockets. So these are my opinions. I hope they give you some thought. I want you to form, get your own informed opinion on the facts that I've given you that I believe are facts and what they say. They contradict themselves constantly. And this new manager, who just rolled into town not even a month ago, who speaks as if he's an expert on these things, he doesn't know what he's talking about. He simply does not know. So I think the construction costs there are going to be super high for these three buildings. We know that the property is full of sinkholes or the potential for sinkholes. I could tell you this. I grew up over there. When I was a little kid, there used to be a big hill there. We rolled down in the snow and make snow forts and snowmen. And there's a lot, a lot of problems with that property. So I've been around a long time. I grew up here. I know what's going on. And if you listen to these people that are talking now, Speace, who comes from Muhlenberg, Krasadis, who comes from Hazleton, our manager, who comes from, according to Dave Speace, the last time he spoke, Southeast Asia, but really from Southeast Pennsylvania. They have no... They have nothing in the game here. They don't care. So this is a big tragic mistake for us. It was a mistake to buy it. Questions still have to be asked. How did we buy a property that is uninsurable? It didn't become uninsurable in the last nine months. That's not reasonable to believe that. So when did they know? How long have they known? I hope this sparks an interest in you and we start getting active before it gets too late. Because I guarantee you, if we let them proceed as they plan on proceeding, you better dig deeper into your pockets. Much deeper. And many of us may not be working in the future because if COVID-19 keeps going like it is, it's going to be serious problems. So I thank you for listening to me. And I encourage you to watch this video again of this meeting, particularly concerning the department reports where they talk about the criminal activity, alleged criminal activity, where they talk about continuing internet meetings. And of course, their discussion on the promenade and the noise ordinance. Thanks again. Talk to you next in two weeks.
Hey, good to go.
Good, thanks, Laurie. I'd like to call to order the Monday, July 27, 2020 meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
A pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
Flag.
Pride.
United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic. Which stands. One nation. Under God. Indemnizable with liberty and justice.
Okay, Mr. Staub?
Here.
Mr. Gauthier?
Here.
Ms. Kircher?
Yeah.
Mr. Krasadis?
Here.
And I'm here, Mr. Speace. We're going to start with public comment. We have two minor additions to the agenda that will be covered at the end under Managers Report. One, legal issue that needs action that just came up. And a grant application modification, which is a minor modification, but we'll mention them later in the meeting. So we're going to start with public comments, Laurie?
Yes. So we have... There are two public comments on the agenda that are not related to the noise ordinance. We have several other comments on the noise ordinance that I will play when we set item on the agenda. So I'll start with the two non-noise ordinance-related.
Very good.
And the first comment is from Tom Walker, and he is commenting on the promenade.
The Exeter Promenade project is a necessary investment in the township's future. The current facilities are long past their expiration date. Our police, highway, and administrative personnel and Exeter residents deserve a first-rate facility. With that said, I urge the supervisors to manage the project from a fiscally conservative position. Remember whose money you are spending. When this project was proposed a few years ago, the plan was to sell the current facilities and use the proceeds to fund the promenade project. Are you still going to follow this plan?
Very good. Jeff, have you joined yet?
Yeah, and I think I'll just comment that, you know, I think that needs to be decided. But I mean, that is, as far as I know, that would be the plan. There would be no reason to keep two sites. They're not needed. But that'll be part of the discussion as we work through that process.
Go ahead, Laurie. Most anyone else have any comments? Okay.
The next comment is from John Carmelo. He has several comments on several different agenda items. Would you prefer I play them all at once or play them per item?
You can play per item, and then if anyone has any comments, they can jump in. If not, we'll just continue.
Okay. So the first one is on the Promenade Shopping Center.
One, discussion on Promenade Shopping Center. Two, discussion on municipal complex architectural request for proposals. RFP, here you go again, pushing the Promenade Municipal Complex. But it still has not been put before the residents and taxpayers for approval. Now, after paying $2.5 million to buy the property, you want to pay even more to have a feasibility study done. That should have been done prior to making the purchase. Then you compounded by talking about demolition plans before you have even done the feasibility study. Many of the residents do not have the job or are struggling to make mortgage or rent payments due to the pandemic. As one of your supervisors knows, there are long lines at the food banks. Yet the board wants to spend millions of taxpayer dollars to provide themselves a new facility replete with gyms, food venues, and other items to make their individual lives better. This borders on malfeasance as you were elected to look out for the residents, not enrich or improve your own individual situations. How can you in good conscience continue to pursue this project at this time? Therefore, I am asking the board continue to pursue this project at this time? Therefore, I am asking the board to table this item until such time as a regular town hall can be held with the residents.
Any comments, anyone? I think there's a reason, and Jeff will address these when we get to them. There's a reason they're on the agenda, and we'll discuss that when we get there.
I'd just like to make a comment that we did tell the residents of the township that there would be a town meeting before anything else proceeded.
Correct. Anyone else? All right. Go ahead, Laurie.
His next comment is on the Monroe muffler item.
Five, consider request for Monroe muffler for net rent forgiveness. Monroe muffler is a $1.3 billion corporation with $699 million in equity. It is my understanding that they have been open and conducting business during the pandemic. The facility in question is a corporate-owned operation. They have numerous ways to get relief from the federal government. Are they trying to double-dip and take advantage of the township's kindness? Unless they can provide documented proof that is not the case, the board should deny their request.
Okay. Is that the end, Laurie, or?
That was the end.
Okay. Comments, anyone? I guess we're gonna certainly touch on that when we get there.
That's a discussion item, yeah.
Okay. We move to regular approvals. Minutes of the July 13th, 2020 meeting?
I'm sorry, that was the end of his second.
Oh, sorry.
He has two more.
Okay. Sorry, Laurie.
No, that's okay. This one is on item six, under New Business Authorization of Weekend Meetings.
Six, authorize advertisement of Board of Supervisor meetings. How long is the Board going to keep hiding from the residents? Look at the number of people who watch the virtual meetings. An average of 35, which is about 0.0038% of the 9,000 households in the township. The excuses for not going back to regular meetings have been heard and are not justified. We have facilities in the township that can be made COV ID acceptable. Yes, it will come at a cost, but these virtual meetings are not providing proper interaction for the residents. So it will be money well spent.
That was the end of that one. He had one more.
Go ahead.
Seven, discussion on township solicitor request for proposals. RFP, responses, the current solicitor has shown a record of incompetence in handling township legal matters. Their record shows they have lost all court cases for the township, including one that cost around $4 million taxpayer dollars. Why then would the Board even consider keeping them as solicitors?
That was it.
Very good. Thanks. Everyone, good to move on since we're gonna have those discussions?
Yep.
Minutes, regular approvals, minutes, July 13th, 2020 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July 13th, 2020.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next item, minutes of the July 13th, 2020, public hearing, the number, the first hearing.
I move that we approve the minutes from the July 13th, 2020, public hearing number one.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. One abstention.
What's the reason?
Um, I wasn't there.
Okay. He came, he came late last week.
Just in the records, Greg, that's all.
Sure. That's fine.
Minutes. Okay, so yeah, so we had one abstention, and we had all, all in favor, voted to approve. Minutes of the July 13th, 2020, public hearing number two.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the July 13th, 2020, second public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain again because I wasn't there.
Very good. Thanks, Greg. Eyes have it. Disbursements, July 27th, 2020. I'll make a motion to approve the disbursements, July 27th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? I think, Joe, you had some comments?
Yep. Jen, if you could just run with a couple questions I have, please?
[inaudible]
All right, can everyone hear me again?
I think everybody's on mute now. Joe, everyone?
Yeah.
Jen, that was better the second time.
Uh, I'm not sure that was me. I believe it had been Stephanie yesterday. Okay. AJ Blazinski, $45,000 invoice. This is our normal monthly recycling charge. Just wanted to notate that we will be addressing recycling for the future for 2021 and the different options that we have. This monthly bill increased dramatically when we did the bid process last year. We accepted the bid for one year, but we will need to reevaluate going forward what we would like to do with recycling and evaluate our options. So we bring that before the Board in the next month or two. Total recycle, there's a bill for $10,078. This is actually associated with the recycling. This is the monthly fee for the processing of the recycled materials. The AJ Blazinski bill is actually just for the collection of the materials. We have some roadwork invoices. One asphalt paving management services was $101,000, and South Reading Blacktop was $57,000. These are for the normal paving projects that we do around the township. The Highway Department completed those in the, over the last two months. These are budgeted items, and they actually come out of the liquid fuels, the state fund money that we get to pay for paving and road maintenance. We have a bill for $69,000 for McMahon Associates for consulting work for the Perkyum Nav project. This is, of course, engineering work for the Perkyum Nav Streetscape project. We are currently evaluating if these funds should come out of the capital fund. So you may see a movement of funds over the next couple of months. The future construction invoices and the grant reimbursements, reimbursements will flow through the capital fund. So we're seeing if we have the funds there to pay for these engineering costs. Fox Rothschild, we had some invoices there, the third normal May 2020 legal invoice. There was an RCC invoice for $1,103. This was actually Fox Rothschild, Rothschild continuing their discussions with our insurance carrier about the water intrusion issue and roof repair issue that we had at the house. I think that's everything.
Thanks, Jen. I appreciate it.
Everyone is muted. So if you could just, I'm not sure who.
There we go.
So, yeah.
What happened there? But any further discussion?
Yeah, I muted everybody. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Treasurers' report for June.
I move that we approve the Treasurer's report for June, subject to audit.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Move to unfinished business, discussion on the draft noise ordinance. So if we want to, if Laurie would play the comments first?
Yep.
And Laurie, has the attorney joined us yet?
Yes, he is on. He is now, he's unmuted. So he is on the meeting, yes.
There you go.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here.
Good evening. We're gonna be doing some public comments, so hopefully you can help us address any comments we have back.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so the first, the first comment related to the noise ordinance is from John Knoll.
One, I had requested a right-to-know application on April 27th, but was told by the township that an extension was appropriate due to the pandemic, which I agreed with. But now, given the current situation, we have heard nothing further to this point. This right-to-know was submitted per township instructions and requested additional information directly related to the noise and zoning ordinance discussions, being most interested in all information related to any proposed changes. Two, following discussions with Representative Joswiak, I repeatedly asked the township to investigate the possibility that riding dirt bikes on land that is zone rural conservation is a zoning violation. The current zoning ordinance was clear to everyone we met with except the township board on forbidding the riding of motorized cycles within the rural conservation zone. Now, the new draft ordinance specifically defines rural conservation zones as residential property removing the neighborhood protection intended by the original ordinance. This change only benefits individuals that were already not abiding by the current zoning ordinance. I am seriously questioning the timing of the publication of the draft ordinances when the right-to-know request that I submitted three months ago has not yet been honored, not just within the required 30 days, but not even prior to posting these proposed ordinance changes. The Board really needs to think about how any proposed changes can protect all members of the township as a whole. Please feel free to contact me with any questions, and when the right-to-know information that I requested will be available to me.
Jeff, do you have any comments, or?
And Jeff, you'll just need to unmute yourself on whichever device you're using audio on.
This is Tom. Are you speaking to me?
I was asking, yeah, I was asking Jeff if he has comments. But yeah, you feel free to have been there. If you have comments, please jump in.
Okay. I was asked to review your noise ordinance and make suggested changes. Some time ago, the issue, the issue was raised as to whether riding dirt bikes is a violation of the zoning ordinance. And my opinion is that it is not, it is not a violation of the zoning ordinance. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that prohibits the riding dirt bikes or ATVs or minibikes or anything else. The new ordinance, what was done is I reviewed the entire ordinance and tried to clarify some of the definitions and add some activities that are specifically prohibited during certain timeframes. And the riding of dirt bikes is one of those activities that in a residential zone, which is a defined term, you can't ride dirt bikes.
I don't think he can address the other concern, which is the right-to-know request. So I think, I think we need to figure out what happened to that. I don't know if Jeff, Jeff wasn't on board, but we definitely need to look into that and make sure we're honoring the request.
I made a note here, and I'll check in with the right-to-know officer and get a status on that.
Thank you.
Okay. I did ask Jeff about that earlier today, and he can, he may comment on that when he comes back. I believe it was a very lengthy one in detail that was taking a lot of time to put together. But I'm not positive of that, so I'll wait for Jeff to comment.
Yeah, it looks like we lost him again.
If it was a lengthy one, there could have been time made that he could come in and view some of it, not that they'd have to take the time to copy it.
Yeah.
That would have been enough for him. But 90 days, I think we need to start seeing a list of what comes in when, and when it's been completed. So that when people ask about it, we know can answer them.
We do that for. Yeah, we get that, Michelle, already.
So we'll, we'll wait for Jeff to comment. Maybe, oh, we kind of need the lawyer on, or Jeff, one of the two. So let's wait, take a pause for a few minutes.
I'm trying to get ahold of them.
Are they in Farming Ridge with Joe? They're probably with the power out all the time.
We've, we've been good. We've been good for a few days. They were putting those new transformers up.
Well, you might have to play it again now, because we need either, I think Jeff and, and the attorney. We're gonna be the two best people to respond.
This is Tom Esty. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe you can continue. I think you got cut off somewhere after the dirt bikes.
Yeah, I did. And the revisions of the ordinance basically addresses noise in three ways. There's a reasonable person standard, which is a legal standard that's been upheld by the courts. There's also certain activities that aren't prohibited during certain times, such as construction activities, noise disturbance on the public streets, and one of them is the dirt bikes or the ATVs. And the third way is by using a sound meter. So, and, and I've discussed these all with the chief, and we tried to make these as objective as possible so we can enforce the ordinance. The chief did tell me that over the many years that he's aware of, we really haven't had a problem with enforcing the noise ordinance. Basically, fines have been upheld when they went to the district justice. This one situation with the dirt bike is sort of an anomaly. So we tried to address that in an objective way. The, the ordinance now defines residential area, which is basically your agricultural and residential zoning districts. And you are prohibited from riding dirt bikes during certain hours of the day, Monday to, Monday to Friday and Saturday and Sunday. So, so that's the way we handled it. I know there were comments from other people. They, they wanted a distance from livestock and distance from the property line. And my discussions with the chief, they would be very difficult to enforce. And he just doesn't see how, he does not see how he could do that by having property line setbacks and distance from livestock that you're moving. So those are standards that we felt were appropriate. I probably said more than I needed to in response to the first comment. Thank you.
No, that was very good. Thank you. You wanna go on, Laurie?
Yep. The next comment is from Sherri Green.
Would each of the Board members please state yes or no for the record if they believe that it is a conflict of interest to have a partner in the solicitor's law firm go to court and argue that the noise ordinance is unconstitutional, subsequently succeed in getting the ordinance thrown out, and then have another attorney in that same firm working to review the ordinance for the next six months until the residents of the neighborhood impacted by the noise complain?
Well, I can respond to that if you want me to. That was the reason I was hired. I have no affiliation with the Fox Rothschild law firm, or any of the partners or associates to that firm. Our firm is in Westchester, and we've represented the township as special counsel on some prior occasions, and that's why we were contacted. But I can assure you that we don't have any affiliation with Fox Rothschild.
And that, that's why we switched attorneys last year for that very reason. So misinformation from Mrs. Green.
But thank you. Thanks. Thank you, Tom. So.
You're welcome.
Next one?
Okay, the next one is from Mike Shade.
In 257.6 Reasonable Person, preeminent violation, Section A discusses the reasonable person standard. This was ineffective in our situation for a number of reasons. Section B, the noise prohibited in paragraph, paragraph 257.3 to 257.5.
that disturbs two or more residents is more challenging as it is incumbent upon the neighbors to call simultaneously. To be able to provide more than one witness on a particular day, we were actually fortunate enough to have six witnesses on the date of the last citation that was issued, but that was withdrawn because it was, for some reason, cited under the same section as the prior citation that was dismissed. Can the chief tell us if anyone has investigated why the rider was erroneously cited under the same section? The officer who responded was excellent. He was aware of the longstanding issues and out of an abundance of caution, he stated that he would discuss the situation with his supervisors to ensure proper citation. To be clear, the responding officer was courteous, professional and diligent and represented the township in a manner that they should be proud of. We are asking if he was told to cite the wrong section, and if so, why? Section J of the draft ordinance tampering the following acts or the causing thereof are prohibited states the following. The following acts or the causing thereof are prohibited. The intentional moving or rendering inaccurate or inoperative of any sound monitoring instrument or device positioned by or for the police department. Provided such device or the immediate area is clearly labeled in accordance with noise control regulations to warn of the potential illegality. We request clarification as to what provided such device or the immediate area is clearly labeled in accordance with noise control regulations to warn of the potential illegality means? The potential illegality of the loud noise or the potential illegality of the moving of the device? When it states that the decibel meter or the immediate area surrounding is to be clearly labeled in accordance with noise control regulations to warn of the potential illegality, does that imply that there must be a label on the meter itself warning that is illegal to tamper with the device? Or that the device and area surrounding it must be clearly labeled so that the dirt bike riders will know that the meter is operational? If this refers to the latter of the situations, then it would be virtually impossible to secure readings.
Uh, this is Tom.
Heard that, yeah.
I can start with the, so I can start with the last comment. There is a section in the ordinance that is in your ordinance now. It was not changed. And what the gentleman was addressing, it's illegal to tamper with a sound monitoring device or instrument. And it, it, you don't have to put a sign up warning people that you're placing a device. The purpose is that the device itself would have a, a placard on it or some kind of plate that would prohibit tampering with the device. So it's not as if someone would even know the device is there unless it's clearly visible in some other way. I think the gentleman also addressed the reasonable person standard. And again, as I stated earlier, that's only one methodology for citing people for noise violations. It does not take two people to agree on something. If somebody complains about their neighbor's, um, barking dog or something else like that and it would bother somebody of normal sensitivities, then you could issue, the police department could issue a citation on that basis. But again, it does not have to be done. That's just one method. And in some circumstances, it could be the only method by which you could file a citation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Laurie?
Um, and the next one is from Jackie Shade.
Laurie, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, we can hear you. Just making sure.
Yep, great.
On August 12th, when Mr. Oss presented the first draft ordinance at the board meeting, it was stated that there was a proposed 50-foot setback from any property line. Multiple ordinances in other townships demonstrate that an appropriate setback from the dwelling is significantly greater. Examples were sent to the board at their request. It is much more likely that an officer pulling into our driveway will be able to observe the dirt bike well within 300 feet of our home than that they will be able to approach our property line with the decibel meter to get an accurate sound reading before the riders intentionally reduce the noise level. Why was the 50-foot setback from the property line removed from the original draft ordinance? And why do you feel that a 300-foot setback from an occupied dwelling is not appropriate? The Weisenberg Township ordinance also states that no person shall operate an ATV or dirt bike within 300 feet of any type of livestock. We requested a similar clause in our ordinance. Those of us that have domesticated animals that are part of our families do not want them terrorized by dirt bikes riding within 37 feet of them. Is the board not concerned that the situation enables what amounts to, in our opinion, abuse of our family animals that we have no control over? After discussions with several past and present police chiefs in neighboring jurisdictions, we have been told that they do not have any difficulty enforcing setbacks and that they are common with ordinances like fireworks, et cetera.
Tom, I think you, you've covered this already, but I don't know if you want to make any further comments. Are you still there?
Tom, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yep, now I can.
Yeah, I, I don't, somehow I got disconnected. This technology is great, isn't it? I, I heard that comment and I think I addressed it earlier. Um, the chief, and frankly, I agree with the chief, it, it seems impractical to try to enforce a setback of, of 300 feet or some other random amount. And that is why that's not included in the ordinance. And I, I didn't hear the rest, so I'm not sure if anything else was said.
Yeah, I think the, the, the rest of it was, yeah, it was around the 50 feet and the 300 feet and certainly the domestic, the impact on pets, animals and people living in those dwellings. But, um, yeah, I think you addressed it earlier with, anyone can lodge a complaint. It's a matter of enforcing that.
Correct.
Laurie, you want to do, up the number five?
Yes, um, so the next comment is from John Hubert.
Mufflers and sound dissipative devices will be ineffective in our situation. We have been told by the owners of the property that proper mufflers are installed on the dirt bikes, yet they still produce noise over 92 dB while they are at least 150 yards from other homes. If, as they have stated, proper mufflers are being used, then they do not reduce the noise to a non-offensive level. The sample Weisenberg Township ordinance that was submitted to the board states specific times during which dirt bikes or ATVs may be operated on a property. Included in that section of the ordinance are also stipulations that no more than two ATVs or dirt bikes may be operated at the same time and that dirt bike and ATV use will be limited to one hour sessions with three hour rest before the next operation of the vehicle with the maximum limit of two sessions per day. The current exoteric draft ordinance only offers hours during which riding will be permitted as well as muffler requirements. Why did we add specific times when riding is permissible and strip away the provisions that restrict the number of bikes and the duration of time during which they can ride?
Just to clarify that last sentence, um, the computer read it kind of funky. Um, it was, why did we add specific times when riding is, in all caps, so when riding is permissible, is what it said.
Well, we didn't, we, we actually are including something that provides hours where riding is prohibited. As it exists now, you can ride anytime. So we've added something to provide prohibited timeframes. Uh, the other comment was about being more restrictive. In other words, you can only ride one bike at a time on the property or you can only ride it for 15 minutes at a time. Again, this is an example of something that the chief believes is not practically enforceable. That we, we just would not be able to enforce that. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie, maybe the next one? Last one, I think?
Okay, yep, last one is from Carol Libby.
You address construction operations and you address non-commercial power tools, but I see no restriction on maintenance operations or commercial power tools. My concern is the use of industrial lawn maintenance equipment in residential areas. Is it possible to restrict this type of activity to normal weekday hours and prohibit it on Sundays and holidays? My second comment is an observation. In recent brief periods that I've been on 422, I experienced considerable bombardments of noise. Sunday afternoon 2030 motorcycles blasted through Rypton, one of which was a three-wheeler carrying huge amplifiers blasting music louder than any parade I've ever heard. At an earlier time, it was a single car with no muffler, but an extremely strong stereo system. I sympathize with people who live on this highway. These transient behaviors are obviously difficult to control, but it is most definitely a quality of life issue.
The section, there is a section about domestic power tools. It is similar to an existing provision in your ordinance. It, it basically prohibits lawn work or including lawn maintenance on residential properties from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM the following day. And it doesn't matter whether it's the homeowner using his or her, her own lawn equipment or it's someone you hire to do the lawn maintenance. You cannot do lawn maintenance during certain timeframes. The other comment about use of vehicles registered by Commonwealth on public highways, uh, that's really not something we can regulate. Thank you.
And, and Jeff, maybe back to you. I think you were not, not on at the beginning of these public comments. The first one was, I think, from a Mr. No on a right to know request that hasn't been completed yet. Didn't know if you could comment on that?
Uh, yes, I checked on that. Um, he did submit the right to know request. Uh, when he submitted it, uh, he, he actually submitted it prior to the final draft that we're working with today. Um, and the information he requested was quite extensive. Um, I believe all that information was gathered together and was forwarded on to our attorney for their review of it because it was so extensive. Um, with the, the issue of, of COVID, um, requirements that right to know requests actually, um, they're somewhat suspended until such time that your building is, uh, returned back to, uh, public occupancy. Um, that, that's not an excuse that we're using, um, but that, that is actually the, the, the law right now. And I, I checked with Ms. Stevens today and, uh, she also contacted, uh, our, our attorney to find out the status, why, uh, they have never forwarded the documents on.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's the end of the, the, the public comments. A lot of, uh, certainly opinions there and thank you for the comments. Um, Tom, I, Jeff, how do you want to proceed? Um, do you, do you want to give your comments on the overall noise ordinance? You, you heard the comments or do we want an, an overall, you know, basically, or, or, or Steve, if you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I came in on the tail end of this noise ordinance. Um, obviously a lot of time and, you know, energy was put into it, um, with legal reviews. Um, they are difficult at best to, for a noise ordinance. Um, I have worked with them in the past. Um, unfortunately, some of it is subjective. Uh, it's very difficult to, um, to enforce some things, uh, you know, without a, a sound meter there constantly, um, some of the reporting can be very difficult. I think we need to defer a little bit, uh, to our, our police department because they're going to be the ones doing most of the enforcement on it. And I think the chief had a lot of input, um, with the solicitor on what can and cannot be enforced. Uh, as with any ordinance, um, we can put this ordinance into place if the board choose to do so. Um, and we can always constantly review it and, and check to see if, if various parts are enforceable or not enforceable. And we can always look to amend it, uh, and change it down the road. Uh, but at this point, I think the chief has done a lot of work with it and I, I think he felt very comfortable with the final document here, that it would be something that he and his officers will be able to enforce.
Thank you. Good summary. Comments from the board?
Uh, I don't understand, uh, one thing, and it's no offense to the attorney, but why other townships can do, um, different setbacks and everything and we can't? And I'm not saying that the chief, um, or the attorney's wrong, but I'd like to, to look into their ordinances and see, um, why they're, and if they have been enforceable, um, how they have, just so to make sure that we are doing everything. Ah, boy.
You're still there, Michelle?
Oh, I'm still here. Okay. The computer's just saying, no, no, no. So we can make sure that we're doing the best that, that we absolutely can because this has been going on for so long. And, um, I just want to, uh, be able to look at these other townships and then go from there and understand it.
And maybe, Tom, you can comment on that or, I mean, Steve, I mean, I think, like you said, you've been working on this a long time and you've reviewed all these ordinances. I don't know, you know, I think that.
This is Tom. Me, I, I did see those ordinance, a couple of ordinances that are more restrictive regarding setbacks. And once again, as I've already indicated, I, I worked with the chief on this and he does not believe that that's practically enforceable. And I want to say, you know, we can, we can enact anything, frankly. But the, the difficulty is, and as somebody already indicated, Jeff, I think, noise ordinances are tricky. And they are hard to enforce, enforce sometimes. The easiest thing to enforce is probably the objective prohibitions. So we have some of that and it's not going to satisfy everybody. But I, I don't think we can outright prohibit some, uh, uses on properties, including dirt bikes. So we've done what we think is practical for the township. And, and finally, what I would say, the chief said to me that, that this is really an anomaly, what happened with the citation and the judge overturning it for void for vagueness. His experience is that this ordinance has been enforced, citations are issued and we get compliance. So I, I think we have one case that has caused us to relook at the noise ordinance, which I think is a good idea. But as a practical matter, it generally works. So as some, as was indicated, there are other municipalities that have more restrictive ordinances. That's frankly something that the chief and I do not recommend in this case. But all in agree, it's a board decision on whether you want it, want to make it more restrictive. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And I do understand, um, that there are things that you just can't do with the, with the noise ordinances. I had gone through that here at Act. I had gone through that here at Actister years ago, and it was with, oh, your sound machine wasn't calibrated right and so on. So I understand what you're trying to do. Um, I just think we need to at least look at them for, to let the the other ordinances, to let the residents, that we have done everything possible. That's all I'm saying, then, um, they know that that we, um, that we have looked at the other, uh, ordinances, and the conclusion was that they're not enforceable or they are enforceable, is all I'm asking.
Would you like a comment from me?
Joe, um, John or Greg?
I have just something to say.
Oh, Steve, you had comments there?
Yeah, I I could say, you know, obviously, we don't have experience in in citing somebody based on setbacks, but there are some challenges with that. You know, of course, the argument could be made, how do you know? Did you measure we were such and such away from a property line? And, you know, would we have legal rights to go on and measure? So some of those ordinances do possess some challenges. Um, the one that's written here is is similar to the our current one in that it does give us three different ways to cite somebody, which, again, is what you referenced earlier. This was an anomaly, um, a little bit. Most of the time, with a noise complaint, we respond, we ask somebody to to turn it down or stop if it's a violation, and most of the time, people comply. If we're called back, then there may be a citation issued, and life goes on. Uh, but I I think that, you know, we do have multiple ways under this ordinance to continue to enforce things like riding with a dirt bike.
Thank you. Yeah, Greg, um, Dave, the only thing I have to say on this is, again, too, coming in towards the end of the movie. It's been going on for quite some time. Any legal document, you would just be concerned about enforceability. And my only concern is, when you start honing in on specific numbers and things like that, does it become selective enforcement, and do we have issues there? Um, again, I, as as Michelle had said, I have no issues with looking into some of the other ones. But, um, as the officer just stated, it's, how do you, how do you say whether or not it was three hundred feet or two hundred eighty or fifty feet as opposed to forty? And how do you get on the property and things like that? So, again, I have no issue with whatever we do. Again, it does seem as as an anomaly, we're focusing on this one particular situation. And if I was there, I'd be frustrated as well. Um, but the key is, uh, for the chief and the attorneys to give us something that's enforceable so we can put this to bed. Yep.
Yeah. Go ahead, Greg. Uh, Dave, you recall you and I met with, uh, Tom and Chief on June third?
Yep.
And I had these takeaways from that meeting. Um, one, that they weren't getting any gor- guidance with what the court's problem was with our old ordinance. So they kind of had to do do the best they could with the information they had. Um, there still can be a noise disturbance even if they're driving during the okay hours. I remember specifically asking that. Um, the ordinance is written, so it's not overbroad. They, um, they didn't want a standard that was just too difficult to enforce. But of course, there are no guarantees. But I think Michelle had a good point, but I think I it it's my recollection they did look at some of those other ordinances with setbacks. Correct, Tom?
Yes, we we looked at all those. The ones that were supplied by the citizens, we looked at. And everything you said, and everything you said is accurate as far as your your takeaways, your observations.
So, you know, my my inclination on this is, you know, I have that we need to trust our professionals. I feel like chief knows more about noise ordinances than I do. I feel Tom knows more about ordinances than I do. We hire professionals, and my inclination is to trust them.
Yeah, I agree with Greg. I think we've, uh, done a good job at, you know, it took a while, but I think this is the right sort of thing to do. And I don't know what looking at, that again, is going to do besides rack up more money on legal bills. So I would, uh, you know, to Jeff's point, let's take the next step.
Thanks, John, and, you know, I would just sum that up. I mean, I think, you know, the the chief and and special counsel, you know, Tom, um, Steve's been involved there, Jeff's been involved on the backend here, looked at everything that's been supplied. And I think they are confident in telling us that there's the best they can do right now or the best they can do and think they can enforce this. So, you know, this is not a once-and-done deal. You know, if we can find a modification or if we have an issue, we can go back and modify. Um, you know, I, in in my opinion, it's the best we can do, and, you know, I I think we should... Yeah, so I think it's, we have three, three choices, maybe more, but you can table this. You can schedule the adoption, you know, based on what we've heard tonight, um, or or suggest modifications. But I'm not inclined for myself to suggest modifications to the experts that have been involved here and reviewed everything. So I guess we were asking, you know, whether or not we're gonna leave this open for further discussion or we're gonna schedule adoption. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, correct.
My inclination at this point would be to schedule adoption.
So you make a motion?
I'll second Greg's motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh...
Opposed?
I'm opposed, and I'm also opposed because the people were not allowed to be in front of the board to speak their their final piece.
Yep.
I want that in the records, too, Laurie.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's four-four, one against?
That was three-two. I was against.
You were opposed, John, Joe?
Yes, I was.
You got that, Laurie, you're good?
Yes.
She's always good.
Very good, so we will move on. Update on community.
All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, I'm signing off. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining.
You're welcome.
Item number two under unfinished business, update on community communications committee.
Yeah, Laurie, do you have, um, some updates on the postcard and, uh, search on the website?
So, postcards, we are still, um, John, I sent John some information, and we're still talking about...
Yeah, I'll have an answer on that, guys, um, this week. I'm told by Thursday I'll have a definitive answer on that. I had to send him the amount and the the, um, how many and the design, so I I should have an answer on Thursday.
Sounds good, yeah, I had to get John that information. But, um, the only other thing I have is just kind of a quick thing. Um, we did manage to get the, uh, a while back, there had been feedback that people were not happy with the search function on the website because when you typed in something to search for a certain topic, the first things that would come up were ads. Um, and that's a standard thing that many websites do. They set it up that way because that's how they pay for some of the stuff on the backend. But we were able to get that eliminated, so now when you search, there are no ads. The only thing that comes up on our website, if you type in, um, a keyword, is whatever relates to that on our website. Still, sounds like a small thing, but I think to some people that will make them happy.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Good, do you have more?
Yep.
Item number, new business. Uh, item number one, discussion on the promenade shopping center. Jeff, I will hand that over to you.
Okay, um, the the latest news that we have on the shopping center, um, not very good when it comes to, um, insurability issues. Uh, the fact that the facility is as old as it is, and, uh, before the township purchased it, it had sat for a number of years. Um, there there is a a major problem going around in the insurance industry right now when it comes to, uh, insurance rates, or, and actually, it's reinsurance rates. Um, our insurance carrier that we work through, through Divit, um, the insurance, reinsurance rates that they're going to be experiencing this year are going up at 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 a minimum twenty-nine percent. Um, that's just, uh, indicative of the industry out there. The problem that we have run into is when a a walkthrough visit was done, um, of the full facility, the, um, reinsurance company, uh, has notified our regular carrier that they will not be providing reinsurance, um, for that facility. They said it it would need, um, roofing, uh, massive amounts of money to bring it up to the level that they would consider insuring it. Um, we have no, no, at this, at this point, we really don't have any plans to fix the facility up and rent, uh, stores back out again. That was not really the intention of it. So we do have this issue, um, with a building that essentially will be uninsurable. The, um, the the issue comes up that we still have several tenants that are located at the facility. Um, all, with the exception of the Monroe Center Auto Center, all the tenants are on a month-to-month lease basis. Um, they do know that they were on somewhat borrowed time because of, um, the facility being the shape it was and changing hands from a a private entity or going over to municipal ownership. Um, at this point, it's my recommendation, and I know it might not be the most popular one, that I really feel we we need to notify tenants that they will have to, uh, leave the facility. Um, the the staff has already contacted Chamber of Commerce, um, and we're going to try and work with them to find some other locations that some of these folks might be able to move into. Um, but I think this is something we have to do. We won't be able to en- insure the facility. The the exception that we're dealing with is the Monroe Auto Center. Um, that has an actual lease, and that lease is in place until September of two thousand twenty-one. Um, that is a, it's unique in that it's more of a standalone building, separate from the main, uh, strip mall and giant building. Um, it's actually in relatively good shape, um, as buildings go. Um, what we're looking at doing is is, uh, looking at how to insure that separately. Um, Divit may be able to ensure that simply because the building is in much better shape than than all the other facilities. When they were here on their site visit, they did not actually go into the Monroe building. So they're going to be, um, back and checking that building. So we're looking at possibly being able to just insure that building, uh, through our regular insurance. Um, if not, um, you know, we'll we'll be looking at regular commercial, you know, liability insurance, uh, for the building until such time the lease expires. Um, we will be talking about the the their lease, um, later in the in the meeting. Um, so it's my recommendation to the board that we, um, that we notify all the other month-to-month tenants. That includes the, um, the dry cleaner and the car wash facility, um, and have them all, uh, find new locations, uh, outside of the complex. Um, as part of the the next item that's coming up, when we talk about the, um, municipal complex proposed idea, um, we will, as part of that, we will be looking at doing a full evaluation of the existing promenades. Um, at this point, um, yeah, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but if we were able to move these folks out of there, I think we really need to look at the possibility of demo- demolishing the existing structure simply because it's uninsurable, it's a liability for the township. And even if we were not to move into that location with a new municipal complex, um, the buildings are are in very bad shape. Uh, they had, they were in bad shape before, um, for for many years, and I think we need to, um, look to possibly, uh, put a bid together and demolish them. The last structure on that property that is actually all part of the whole complex is the old Radio Shack building at the northern end of the property. Uh, as part of the Streetscape project that is going on in the area, um, on Perky Avenue, on Perky and Moon Avenue, that building is is scheduled to be demolished. And the cost of that demolition is included in the grant because that whole entrance driveway is being shifted over as part of the realignment of the, uh, of the the entrance into that complex. So that building is going to be torn down. Um, there may be a possibility, if we can work the timing of putting out a bid for a demolition of some of the other buildings, that a contractor that's coming in to do the demolition on that building , uh, might be able to give us actually a much better price simply because they're not going to have mobilization costs. They'll already be there on site, set up, ready to tear down that building, and they might be able to, just be able to move, uh, up into the site and and start taking down the other building. So that's, that's really kind of my recommendation. I think we really need to to move ahead with getting the tenants out of there and and providing whatever assistance we can in, um, in 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 trying to find them new locations. And then look at the the whole concept of demolishing that building.
So Jeff, what what do you need? Consensus of the board, or you need motions for discussing with the tenants and then the demolition bids?
Yeah, I I think, uh, motion by the board on on the two items. The first being to, um, to proceed with notification to the tenants to, um, to have them, uh, be removed from the building. And the second one would be a motion authorizing, um, proceeding with with bids for demolition of the main structure. In the meantime, we will continue working with our insurance agency to, uh, secure, uh, insurance for the Monroe building, um, which we're somewhat tied in because we have that that lease that goes through September twenty-one.
Jeff, a couple, a couple questions. So the the building currently right now, we have zero liability or, um, property coverage or just property coverage?
Um, both. We have, we have no, no coverage at all on that property because because of the reinsurance, uh, issue on it.
Okay.
When the building was purchased by the township, um, it was kind of put in a a holding pattern because there was the anticipation that the building was going to be, um, demolished, um, quicker than later and that the tenants were going to get moved out quicker, and we were going to just have a big blank, empty lot. Um, that did not happen, and that's why the the issue arose of the the insurance not not being available for that complex.
Well, uh, two things. One, if if there's no coverage, I mean, there's tremendous liability for the the township residents. Uh, so I I don't think there's really much choice there. And then as far as, uh, Monroe, if if a traditional source of insurance dividend, whatever it will be, and we're subject to a lease, and it's our responsibility to maintain insurance, we're gonna have to look at a Lloyd's of London type of higher-risk coverage, uh, to be able to do that. But, again, if you're stating that we do not, so if we are basically self-insuring right now, um, and knowing that the condition of the property, I I I don't see there as being any other option but to cease being a landlord, unless I'm missing something.
No, that that's correct. Um, uh, you know, they, the, uh, our insurance carrier, um, did state that, uh, he would be working with us. He would be working up some prices for, uh, insurance for the Monroe building. Um, I have not heard back those numbers from him, but that is something that, um, they are working on doing because they know that facility, even though they did not do a full inspection, they know that facility has been up and functioning and is a standalone building. Um, it's, it's not, it wasn't built the same as the other buildings. It's a four-block building. Um, it's it's set up a lot differently than than the retail building, um, attached to the giant.
One last question, Jeff. Are the, uh, since the dry cleaner and the car wash is on the opposite side, and it it, since it has been being used, do you think it's in much better shape? Is there a potential, until we know what's going on, that we would be able to extend them and get insurance? Or is that on it, or are they classifying that as uninsurable as well?
Um, they they have not, uh, classified those buildings. The the, uh, car wash is is actually not in very good shape. Um, the dry cleaner, I think, is in much better shape and might be able to be included in the insurance on the Monroe building. When they come back out, um, and and do their evaluation, I'll I'll make sure that we make that point with them, too, to see if they would be able to insure that building so we'd be able to allow the, at least the dry cleaner to to remain open.
And what's the timing, Jeff, on that, when we have them to leave?
Um, well, as soon as possible. I mean, obviously, we'd like to, there, it's it's month-to-month. Um, I'm not sure if if the, if it runs on the calendar, January, you know, the first of the month. Um, but we we obviously... But we obviously will try and be, you know, a good landlord and try and work with them. But I would anticipate they should be out of the facility, probably no later than the end of August, if at all possible. Thanks.
Thanks, Michelle.
What was that, Greg?
Joe had asked the question I had, which was the dry cleaner and car wash.
Okay.
My question is, then we should have actually an inspection done on both buildings. So, if we're going to continue to rent them out, that way we'll know for sure what's, if there's anything wrong with them.
Yeah. They said they're, hopefully, we'll be able to come back next week and do the inspection of the Monroe Building. And while they're there, we'll have them check the dry cleaner also.
And I think that the car wash and the Chinese restaurant are the same owner?
Yes. The car wash, the dry cleaner, and the Chinese restaurant.
Eight seventeen is when Peter's coming up from the Divot.
What was that, Clarence? I'm sorry.
Eight seventeen is.
August seventeen.
Yeah, August seventeen is when Divot is coming up to check those buildings out. And the car wash, he's already been cited. They don't keep any of the trash. It's blown all over the place. The cans are always running over. Not sure you want to really keep it open. It's in poor shape anyway, but he does not keep up with his, all the trash that's there.
Well, it sounds like that structure's going to get inspected, so we guess for that structure, we can wait for the inspection.
Sure.
So, it sounds like we need a motion for notifying tenants if folks agree and get bids on demolition.
Well, again, just to confirm, Dave, we would be at least initially notifying the tenants on the old Giant and Blockbuster side, correct?
Correct.
And then waiting until the inspection for the standalone side over where Monroe, the dry cleaner, and the car wash is, is correct. Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Clarence, is that accurate?
Yeah.
And so, and there are currently four tenants in that side, on the other side, that we would be giving notice?
Correct.
Okay. Then I would propose make a motion. Do I need, Jeff, do we need the names of the four tenants, or just on note that side, or what exactly?
It could just be a motion for the tenants located in the Strip Center.
Okay.
Promenade Shopping Center.
We'll cover those folks, and we'll, the other, the other building, the Monroe side, we'll deal with that separately.
Well, I'll make a motion that we give thirty days' notice to the four remaining tenants in the Strip Center side of the Promenade Shopping Center.
I'll second.
Okay, Greg got it.
That was Greg. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
We could also suggest if they need other places, there's a lot of places in Exeter that has open space. And if not, in St. Lawrence, they have that wall, just to try and help them.
Yep, that's true.
Yeah, just make sure we do that on the communication piece, because, and this will be all over Facebook.
Yeah.
Yes.
And look, just again, too, I mean, first off, and again, the building was purchased before, and this was planned, and right now, I'm more concerned from a liability perspective of having an uninsured building. I can tell you what, right now, if it was a home and you didn't have insurance, they foreclosed on you, or they put forced-placed insurance as your responsibility. But if it's our responsibility and we cannot insure it, it's not fair to the tenants in case something would happen as well. And we know the condition for those that have toured the Giant facility. I don't see a lot of value in that shell right now.
Very good. Thanks, Jeff. And I will make a motion that we, at least, that we get bids on the potential demolition of the strip portion of the promenade.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I mean, just, you know, getting bids isn't going to cost us anything, and it will give us an idea of what the cost would be for teardown, which I believe was part of the original plan.
Yep.
And especially, too, if it's going to be the same group that's coming in with the Radio Shack Building. So, I believe it does make sense to at least see what the costs are for, to get rid of that building.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Jeff, item number two, a discussion of the municipal complex.
Dave, I'd like to bring up one other thing, though.
Go ahead, Greg.
I think we should, you know, take a look at what rent we're charging them. Where this is, even though they knew this could be potentially happening, for them to move their expense, their business, they're going to be incurring an expense. And I don't know if we want to discuss it at our next meeting, or something along those lines, but, you know, charging them rent in August, maybe we can waive that, do something to help them a little bit.
Yeah, good, good point. Jeff, maybe in your discussions with them or notification of them, you can think about that and come back to the board.
Certainly, yeah. If they're, I don't believe any of them of that group had asked for waivers of rent or loan rent, but I'm sure, given the fact that they will have those expenses of moving, I'm sure they would like to entertain that. So, I will reach out to them and discuss that with them, and I'll report back at the next board meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Hey, Jeff, before you move on, I just want to backtrack real quick. I think the motion that was done, and I apologize, I just was reviewing it, but I think the motion that we did for the noise ordinance, I, the motion was authorizing scheduling the noise ordinance for adoption. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it actually needs to be a motion to advertise a public hearing for August 10th for adoption of the noise ordinance.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So, I think we just need to amend the motion.
I made the motion, so I'll amend it.
Great.
I second Greg's motion. I'll second Greg's amendment. Greg's amended motion.
Perfect.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Well.
Okay, so three, two. Motion amended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for catching that, Lori.
Yep, thank you.
Item number two, under new business, discussion on municipal complex, the architectural requests for proposals, RFPs.
Okay. Several months back, the board had put out a request for proposal. Hello? Am I still there?
Yep, you're good.
Something happened.
We can hear you.
As long as you can still hear me.
We can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. Everything just went blank, completely blank on me, but that's all right. As long as you can hear me, that's fine.
I can see you, too.
Oh, you can? Okay. Well, I can't see me, but that's, I can't see anything, but that's fine.
You might need to try to wake it up.
It's awake. It's, okay.
It'll come, hear you and see you.
Okay. Anyway, the issue was brought up, and the board solicited reports from various architects' firms to do a feasibility study for the municipal complex project. I believe a number of them came in, actually made presentations to the board. The board asked Mr. Hamm to go back to the, to the one company and ask for an updated proposal that was leaning more towards like an hourly rate for their project as opposed to a full dollar amount on a full-scope project. They came back with a revised project, and in essence, it really does cover what we are looking to accomplish in the beginning. We want them to come in here, do a full review of our facilities, review the promenade location as a possible location to place a new municipal building, as well as look at what we have currently in the facility and what the staff needs are for this facility, and the whole concept of putting in a new fire station and possibly a community center as part of the, my back. Okay. Very good, amazing. As well as, you know, a fire station and the concept of a community center, well as all our current facilities. So, we went back to them. They came up with a current price. The architect firm is KBCA. I know a number of the staff members took some tours of other facilities, and it included some buildings that this group had designed, and most of the staff were very impressed with what they saw out there. In order to move this project forward, I think we really do need to at least get this feasibility study completed. This is not full-blown design, by no means. This is really sitting down with each department, which we've already started that process here internally. Each of the departments were tasked with putting together a report that details all their information, what their future needs are, what they have right now. They've already been working on that. The fire department put together an actual video, walked through video of their current facilities, and talked about some of their needs. So, we've already started that process internally, but we do need this feasibility study to tie it all together, have somebody look at all the components and decide what type of facility really is going to be required, and their recommendation, if it's possible to revamp current facility here, or would it make more sense fiscally to relocate to a new location and then be able to sell this property, which was part of the original concept plan many years ago when this was first discussed. So, based on the fact that the board has already, now their choice down to this firm, we're able to come back and get some new pricing to complete the initial phases. I'm recommending that the board approve, make a motion to approve KCBA architects to complete the feasibility study for a proposed new municipal complex.
Thanks, Jeff. Questions, comments, supervisors?
To me, this is what makes sense as the next step. I know people want to have a community meeting, and I'm all for a community meeting, but I want to have some information to share with the community. And I don't know how you can have a discussion, a community meeting, without any, any kind of professional information. So, to me, it makes sense to do this.
Yeah, I think this is the next logical step, as we discussed a couple of months ago now.
Just as a reminder, in their proposal, the architect, they do plan on having a public forum, whether it's, in whatever format they're going to have to adapt and come up with. It may need to be multiple meetings where the public, you know, small gatherings of the public can meet in some type of setting, or, you know, Zoom conferences that people could register in advance and talk with the architects to get the public input. They are planning on doing that. That is part of this proposal, but it does make sense to have information from the staff and our departments first, so they have something to work with and then go out to the public and get their input and gauge their response to what they've already found.
Just a couple of things. One, obviously, I would prefer to have a community, a community meeting as well, just to hear the thoughts. I mean, there's no doubt about it from administration building and from the highway department to police department, fire department, there's upgrades that need, that are needed. My, what I was hoping to hear was on the community center, because I've heard both sides. As I go into the new Giant, and you talk to people, you hear one, the set that says, "I have no interest in that. It'll never be used," and the next person says, "That'll be the greatest thing since sliced bread." So, that's, we know we need something to get us up to, up to snuff with the rest of the departments, and obviously, doing it in a manner that doesn't use as much money as we have to. The community center is where I really wanted to get the public opinion. I'm not sure if, from the communications side, we could almost do something there just to reach out. I mean, the COVID situation unfortunately isn't getting any better. I tell you, I will, as twenty percent of the board, I hide from no one. I know someone made that comment today. I just am following the directions, and I know what's going on. I mean, just in my business alone, I will share that we've already made the decision that we are not going into branches for the rest of the calendar year. So, I know what's going on and what the case is going up. It's just, it's very difficult. Again, we'd much rather have it in public, but what are you going to do? This is what PSATs, I believe, is telling us as well. So, from this standpoint, I do believe it's important to get the information just to say, the current building, I think it's important to see, can we retrofit the current building to keep the expenses down, to do what we need to do? And if not, utilization, and could you do a community center there, or then the old Giant Center to see whether it is, and then take that information to the public. But I can tell you that I would not approve dollar one as far as any type of breaking ground on anything without having a community involvement.
Yeah, and I agree with you. When I look at this, I almost have the community center as a separate item in my mind. You know, when I think we need to get more information, I specifically am talking about the police, fire, highway, and administration. The community center, to me, is a whole different animal. I wouldn't want to see a ton of work done on something like that. I'm more concerned with the other areas.
Yeah, very good point, Greg, because I think it's going to be a priority thing. We're not going to want to spend or can afford everything, so it's going to go down the list of the highest needs, whether that's the fire department, and then you work your way down the list.
Yeah, we just, we have to keep an open mind, be creative, I think, outside the box, which, which I know we've been struggling the last few months to do those things, but let's just keep that in mind.
I think we do think out of the box. I think we need to be practical. We don't know what's going to happen with the COVID. We don't know what it's going to, how it's going to affect our economy. And I don't think we should take money that we should have not, we should not have sold the sewer plant, and I don't see waste, it's not a waste. We do need space for some, but spending it all on one thing.
Yeah, that wasn't the case, Michelle, but we'll agree to disagree before I fire it up.
Jeff, were you going to say something?
I'll comment.
I need to, I need to talk to you, John, about quit saying that I, that I.
I'll do it offline, Michelle.
John and Michelle tried to stop the sidebar. Jeff, any other comment?
Yes, I think the fact that Lori had done a study, a survey, and actually, the response rate was fairly good when it comes to surveys regarding a community center and recreational needs. Lori, maybe you can, you know, give us a little input on that. That might be a good basis for us to work from, to have, get a little more input from the residents, but use that, the survey that was done as a basis. Any comments?
Yeah, absolutely. I think just a few months ago, I re-presented the results of the survey that I shared with the board, and there was, I don't have all the numbers right off the top of my head, but we did have a pretty good response rate, like you said, for a survey of that kind. It was a pretty good representative population, and most of the community who responded to the survey weren't in support of a community center. weren't in support of a community center. I'd be happy to do some more information and spend some more time on that. And I'm more than happy to come up with more additional creative ways to involve the public and to get some additional input. But I think the survey did provide us with some good starting data and some good... And a good baseline that we know that there are a good portion of our residents who would support a community center in some format. Of course, it doesn't, you know, tell us exactly what the community center needs to be or has to be, but we do know that there is support for something in the township for us to be able to offer some additional services and additional space, and especially indoor space. But yeah, I'd be happy to work on any... On additional projects to get community input, whether it's another survey. I don't know if I'd recommend it being another survey in the format that we did, but something along those lines. We certainly could come up with something.
Thanks, Lori. Yeah, and I think, as Greg and others said, that's one piece of the puzzle. But now, I think you've talked to the department heads and you have a lot of data. There's a lot of information out there, but putting that together and I think determining what that means in square footage and facility structure and other things is something that we need someone to guide us on. So I will make a motion to have KBCA work with our departments to put together some data and to work with the public to put together at least this information in a format where we can have a more thorough discussion on our needs.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed because we're not going to even have any open meetings till... What do you get advertised till October? Public won't be involved.
Thank you. So yeah, so four, one. One opposed. Eyes have it. I would say that, you know, I think they could be very creative, and I'm sure they've been doing this. And they're working with townships all the time. So, you know, whether they could be virtual or there's a sign-up sheet and you have a room that can host 20 people and you get 80 signed up, there could be four sessions. But I'm sure they may have some ideas of how to do that. I would hope, so.
Yeah, there's a way to do it.
All right, thank you.
Lori, can you move the agenda?
Item number three, 4575 Perkyomen Avenue, time extension project. This is Martin's Appliance.
I can give a little bit of a background. Martin's Appliance has applied for a time extension. To give the board a little bit of a background, a land development plan was submitted back in July 22nd last year. At the August 2019 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed the plan. However, no action was taken on the preliminary plans. We generated a review letter that was dated August 13th. At that point, Martin's Appliance, and this is the former Scott Ryder site along Perkyomen Avenue, they applied for a time extension this past February for 180 days, which would take us to August 12th of this year. Representatives of Martin Appliance are requesting a time extension again, which would require a waiver from our subdivision of land development ordinance because we only allowed for two waivers with an aggregate of 180 days, and they already exceeded... Or going to exceed that 180 days. They're looking for a one-year time extension on the basis that due to the COVID, a lot of their other projects were put on halt and construction activities were delayed. They are interested. They bought the property. They are very interested in developing this into their new store. This will be better accessibility for customers. It obviously would eliminate their current one along Perkyomen Avenue. So this evening, they're looking for a waiver of Section 330-60 of our subdivision land development ordinance and for the board to consider granting a one-year time extension for their land development plan. Planning Commission didn't object since they... Under the conditions of the pandemic, they felt as though they are showing good faith effort that they really do want to develop this site. I think it has to do with their construction projects as well as financial commitments to those previous ones that are still ongoing.
Thank you, Joe.
I'll make a motion to grant Martin's Appliance a one-year time extension for their preliminary plan submission.
Second. Any further discussion?
So, Joe, again, you don't see this as any type of an issue. It just seems to me that they just need additional time to be able to do their planning to get into the Ryder facility or that address. Is there anything else we're missing?
Correct. No, they still need to address those items in their review letter of last August. There are many issues. However, I believe now that they've committed themselves to purchasing the property, one of the issues that we're pushing is for internal access. They're trying to negotiate with the current owner of the Exeter Commons Shopping Center. That would make, I think, their site more marketable. And I think it would also be a better traffic condition where you can have both ingress and ingress movements, not only from Perkyomen Avenue, since that's a state road, but also internally. So township has met with them, and we've been working with them. And they have shown effort that they really do want to develop this site. And I really think it's just a delay because of the current events and the fact that they have a couple of other projects that were delayed. But they have shown signs that they really do want to continue and have this plan go in front of the Planning Commission, hopefully have these issues addressed.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number four, preliminary plan approval, 10 Santa Maria Drive.
I can handle that one. Our last Planning Commission meeting on July 20th, 10 Santa Maria Drive is a small, minor subdivision of two lots that's located on a private driveway, but the private driveway accesses Faber's Road. The plans were in front of the Planning Commission for preliminary plan approval, which they did receive condition upon meeting any outstanding items of our July review letter. The... They did seek a waiver from the Board of Supervisors, which was granted for wetland study that they... Their engineers certified that there is no wetlands on the site. However, we directed them to also add the signature block as well as a plan note that if wetlands would be encountered during construction, the homeowner would be required to perform that such study. The Planning Commission, the only other items that are really outstanding is the SEO for their on-lot system, which is still pending. The remaining items pertain to just plan signatures and so forth and easements that are required per our subdivision land development ordinance. Before us this evening, there is a draft resolution that was prepared for action to be taken tonight for granting preliminary plan. And my recommendation, as well as the Planning Commission, is for the board to consider granting preliminary plan for 10 Santa Maria Drive.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for preliminary plan approval for 10 Santa Maria Drive.
I'll second.
But, Michelle?
Yeah, Michelle. Give her.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Consider request from Monroe Muffler for May rent forgiveness. Jeff, you're going to?
Yes. Monroe had contacted our solicitor regarding this matter. They were proposing rent forgiveness for the month of May. They stated they would pay then for the month of June. And at the same time, they were looking for an extension of their lease, a long-term extension, a seven-to-10-year lease extension, which obviously we're not interested in at all. I believe they were... They were made the offer by the board. I believe it occurred before I got here, if they were looking for any type of waiver on their rent, which they did not ask for any waiver at that time. They have not paid any rent for the month of May or for June. And we're just about done with June here. I mean, in July, they haven't paid anything for June, and now we're also into July. So, you know, I don't know if we want to offer them a waiver at this point on their rental. If we gave it to them for May, would they then proceed to pay June, July, and all the way through until the end of their lease? There had been comments that they said they really had no intention of paying for their rent. That's kind of been unsubstantiated. I'm not sure if that really came directly from their corporation. They have been open the entire time during the pandemic. They might have had a little bump in the very beginning, but they were open for business. They were considered an essential business and were open all the way through. And there are people there all the time. So it's not like they were shut down by the business. I think one of the comments that was made earlier in the evening referred to, you know, the fact that it's a very large corporation that, you know, should be able to pay their rent. So it's really up to the board if you feel we should be somewhat of a benevolent landlord and give them a little bit of relief, but hold their feet to the fire moving forward and recommend that when their lease expires in September of 2021, that they will no longer be in that facility.
Jeff, they were supposed to get us data to show that... I know we had trouble, like you said, getting data for how their business was doing. Did they ever give it? Did they ever get us that?
Oh, no. No. Yeah. No, and I... John, yeah, I agree, Jeff. I mean, I think thanks for the information. But based on, yeah, the public comments and what they've been doing and certainly your recommendation, I would... I'm certainly opposed to forgiving any rent in this case or considering any extensions.
Yeah, there's no way I would... I mean, we decided to make a decision, I think it was month one, it was March or April, where we did it for all of our tenants, knowing what was going on. But my personal opinion is they're taking advantage of the situation and on top of it, asking for an extension. It doesn't quite work that way when somebody's not paying, where you want to give them more time. You want to give those people less time. We're now at the point where, I believe, we come back with an option of forbearance as far as paying on the back end. But to pay, I believe, was to pay the next month. So I would give... I'm going to... It's an absolute no for me with paying. And until we would know one about what our plans were of the building, I certainly wouldn't extend, especially if somebody's not paying their rental on time.
Yeah, we definitely can't extend. And the fact that they didn't send us data, that really bothers it for me after they said they would. So I'm a definite no for these guys.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion saying no, Jeff?
Yeah, I prefer a motion. That way, I can reference it in my letter to them stating that they owe us the money and that we are not extending their lease past the September 2021.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we do not forgive the May rent and we do not extend their lease past September 2021.
Second. That was Joe. Joe, Joe got it.
Question. Do we want to just say the May or do we want to say that the May, June, July, almost August went?
Well, they only requested May, Michelle, in their email.
Okay.
I'm just going by what they requested.
Okay. I just want to make...
Yeah, that's why I asked of it.
So we're not forgiving any, but... All those in favor?
Point.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number six, authorized advertisement, Board of Supervisor meeting. Jeff, I think you've been doing some work here.
Yes. Based on the direction that we've received from the state and PSATs on the fact that things have kind of taken a step back in recovery from COVID, I'm recommending that, at this point, we at least advertise our meetings for August, September, and October to continue being virtual meetings via Zoom. In event something miraculous happens and things change very quickly, we could always re-advertise and say we're going to have public meetings again open to the public or what have you. But in terms of just doing it one lump sum, instead of each month coming back to the board and asking for it, that costs us money to advertise every month. Normally, you advertise your meetings in January for the whole year. And what we've been doing, we've been going back and advertising month by month after the board approved it. So this will save a few dollars. And we can always go back to a public meeting and re-advertise. This will just save us a few dollars in the short run.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Questions, comments?
Yeah, it makes sense. I think, you know, we're definitely going to be virtual for the foreseeable future, probably the rest of the year, but definitely do it in chunks. Saves money. So I'll make a motion to authorize advertisement of the Board of Supervisors meeting to held virtually for the months of August, September, and October.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number seven, discussion on township solicitor requests for proposals and the responses thereof. I think everyone will recall a meeting or two ago, a couple of meetings ago, we appointed a committee to look into these RFPs, these proposals, and then come back to the board with a recommendation. Joe, that was Joe and Michelle. That was... You guys have been working on this, so...
Correct.
A report.
Yep. Yep. I'll start, Michelle. I shot you an email. I'm not sure if you got it today. Yeah, Michelle and I had reviewed the RFPs that were sent in. There were five or six total. The reason the motion is listed as is is because one of our current solicitor was one of the RFPs that were out there. After reviewing it, Michelle and I discussed that we looked at the merits of all. They were all very impressive. What we decided to do was we chose one. We then had... I reached out to Jeff. Jeff then vetted the firm in question, came back and was with glowing recommendations. The firm that will be making a recommendation, I figured we could open up for questions and obviously for Michelle to make comments. And then we could make a motion. But it's Hartman, Valeriano, McGovern, and Lutz. They're a line-missing-based firm. They are by far the lowest hourly fee of the group. They specialize in municipal government. In fact, I believe the number is like 13 or 14 class-two townships. They also handle five boroughs. We will have one primary contact. So I believe that local-based, where we're going to be able to... We feel a little bit of our fees and also have some that really specializes in municipal government, that it would be a better way to go for the township. So that was the recommendation. Again, Jeff had vetted it and certainly would let Jeff make a comment. But that's my take on it, and I'm not going to make the motion yet, but open it up for Michelle with any comments she would have.
Well, I think you about summed it up. I've gone to a lot of the community, Albright's Community Center, and I've gone to a lot of conferences where they have appeared. And they're very up on everything. And I think they'd be a wonderful addition to the township, very knowledgeable.
Thank you. Jeff, do you want to comment before I make a motion, then everyone else can make a comment?
Yes. Actually, my initial, you know, reaction to their application, I was concerned about this, the size of their firm and the size of the municipalities that they have dealt with. However, in speaking with their larger clients and a number of their smaller clients, they all came back with the same type of information that they are a full-service municipal law firm, that they do have people on staff if there are labor issues. They do have people to deal with specific ordinance questions. They... Several of them commented about their price structure and their billing was extremely detailed and very... detailed and very, very spot-on. Those are the kinds of things that, when somebody volunteers that to a cold call, as I was making to some of these people, that's pretty telling about how the firm works and how they operate. When I was speaking with various managers and people in other municipalities, they all referred to them by their first names. They seemed very comfortable with them as their solicitor. So they definitely convinced me that, you know, we would, population-wise, would probably be their largest municipality that they would represent, that I don't think there'd be any drop-off in the services that they provide simply because we're a complex, large municipality. So I was very, very pleased with what I heard from everyone.
Well, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint the firm of Hartman, Valeriano, McGovern, and Lutz as the solicitor for Exeter Township.
I'll second that.
Any other questions or comments?
Other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things. I talked to Joe Friday, and I had some concerns with the process, but Joe put me at ease there. Joe took the lead on everything, so I was happy with that. And I did have concern with two of the bids that were sent in. Sienna Delaware was, kind of blew up, and they became Sienna Law and Delaware Kelly. So I'm just glad that we didn't pick any of those two, because that would have been not a good thing. They were involved with the $2.8 million misappropriation, the liquor license, illegal liquor license to Viva. So I was happy with either, you know, Hartman that we're going to maybe pick tonight, Cosloff and Fox Rothschild. So I was happy with those three. So after talking to Joe, I felt that the process was good, and I want to thank Joe and Michelle for all their hard work. And just, I'll be voting no, just because I think we should stay with the incumbent for at least the rest of the year. Two of the main reasons were they're dealing with the bus barn and the wastewater treatment plant and some other personnel issues that, I know the legal bills are very high, but as I've said many times, you know, there's a lot to clean up, so our legal bills did have to be high. So I just want to wish Sam and the team well. They did a great service to Exeter the last many years and have a setup for the future and cleaned up a lot of our sins.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I wanted to comment as well. Greg, do you want to go first, or do you want, any comment?
I trust Michelle and Joe. I mean, we decided on a committee approach, and, you know, I think it's important when you appoint a committee that you respect their work, and so I'm going to support what they recommend.
Thanks, Greg. And I would say the same. Very nice work, Joe and Michelle. Thanks for taking the time to go through that. I also like to thank Fox, Sam, Alicia, and everyone else that has supported us on many issues. And I think there will be some ongoing things that we're doing. There'll be transitioning here, I guess, that Jeff and his team will work on. Some issues will need to be completed and other things, but those logistics will get worked out. But, yeah, they're my comments, but thanks again for the committee for doing this. So we had, Joe made the motion, Michelle second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Got it, John. So four-one.
Four-one.
Motion carries. Thank you. Department reports. Lieutenant Schaefer?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, the police department, the community, continue to work very well together, and I have a few noteworthy things to report. We, our four new hires, they're all doing very well. And what's interesting is the veteran officers are doing a great job of helping to train them. That's pretty neat. We have a sergeant's exam coming up this weekend, so just wish those officers luck. They've been studying really hard the ones who are going to take it. And I'm sure everybody's seen, we had a plane on on 422 last week. That was the first one. So the platoon that was working, they did a great job. And that's one of the neat things about being a police officer, is they get new challenges every day. They did very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarence?
Yeah, all I have is we have a, we're coming near the end of the paving season. We have a, we finished our last large one, which was down there on Lincoln's, but we have one little job to do yet on only turnpike, and that'll be it for that. Continuing with the lawn room, a lot of these trees just keep growing. But other than that, doing a lot of park work. So that's about it.
So if I might just jump in here, speaking of park work, we have been working on the park grant applications that I had brought before the board several months ago. We did submit, we submitted the two applications to, one to DCNR and one to DCED. We got some feedback on the DCED grant application. Some things have changed. Everybody doesn't always, they don't, everyone doesn't have as much funding as they were thinking they would have. We had initially applied for two parks in one grant. The feedback we got is that they're not really considering that, so we had to choose. So I reduced the grant application from our initial application. I'm now just applying for Pineland Park because it's in need of the most work. So I just need the board to consider approving an updated resolution. They require a resolution to go along with the application. So the amount of money that we are requesting is less than we requested before, which means our match is also less than was previously approved. So I just need an updated motion to approve the resolution to submit the grant application to DCED in the amount of $171,174 improvements at Pineland Park.
I'll make a motion to amend or update the resolution for the DC grant for Pineland Park in the amount of 170,000, what was that, 171?
171,174.
171,174.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thanks, Laurie.
Thank you.
Is that it? Joe?
Actually, I have nothing more to add than what was already on the agenda for this evening.
Great, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Uh, yes, I have one item that I need to bring up. After the agenda had all been put together and finalized and sent out, this item came in, and it is a time-sensitive item that the board needs to take action on. There was allegations of criminal conduct have been made against a current township supervisor. That supervisor has asked the township to pay for legal representation in the matter. The township is responsible for mere allegations of criminal conduct during an investigation. If the board chose to decline to pay, the township could potentially be held responsible for legal fees related to the investigation as well as any fees incurred to defend the board's initial denial. If there were a guilty finding, the township could be reimbursed for the expenses. What we're looking, this was done previously for a former board member. This is standard practice in municipal government if requested by a board member to receive representation involving these situations like this. We would need a motion to authorize payment for legal representation to a current board member.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a question. Is it for, was it for a former supervisor or for a current one?
This is for a current. Most recently, the board had done this for a previous board member.
Okay.
Believe this, this is also related to the same situation.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Eyes have it. Four-one. Thank you. Anything else, Jeff?
Um, just to let the board and everyone know that the township staff, we, in order to try and protect everyone a little bit more, we have looked back at our policy regarding working remotely for some of the administrative staff. We are rotating a day out here, there, working from home. And we were able to rotate through where, for the most part, there are several key staff members here each day, but we've been able to do this, and I don't feel we're missing a beat on anything, but we are trying to help protect the staff here as much as possible to get everyone healthy. So we'll revisit that occasionally to see how things are working. So far, it's been very good. I actually rotated out one day last week myself and actually had a quite a successful day remotely, had a number of meetings with the staff remotely. So I think we're missing a beat on anything. And I just want to compliment the staff in general on how they're handling this and working to speed. What's interesting, in cases like this, many times you get emails at slightly off-hours. People tend to be working a little bit longer and sometimes earlier in the day. Their work is certainly getting done. They just sometimes just spread it out a little bit more, but by no means is anyone slacking off when they're working from home. They are, in fact, really working. Again, I'd like to compliment our staff on what they're doing for us.
Thanks, Jeff. One other thing popped, just popped into my mind, I saw some, we were talking earlier, and either for you or Clarence, on the Co-Stars, and, you know, is that something you want to address in a future meeting, once you get more information, or?
Um, did you, were you able to open that today, Joe, the listings?
Yeah, the second, the second time you sent it to me, Clarence, I was. I told you I was, I'd look at it later, yep.
Is there any specific information that you would like us to get for you?
No, no, I just, I was just looking for clarification with the program. My understanding with Co-Stars was it was good up to a certain dollar amount.
No, there's no.
Again, so again, that's my misunderstanding. So if it's, if it's a procedural thing where it's guaranteeing us the lower price and it eliminates the bidding procedure, I'm, I don't see that as being a problem. I was just, I was asking to be educated.
Yeah, no, that's fine. But if there's anything you want, you know, specifically, just let us know and we'll get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
So you're good, good to go, Clarence, I guess. Public comments?
There were no general comments submitted.
Okay. Supervisor reports. John?
Good, just everybody continue to stay healthy and stay cool. I'm good for the night.
Thanks. Joe?
Yes, we're hoping to schedule the community park meeting with St. Lawrence, the school district, and the township. We were throwing out a date of Monday, the, was it the 10th?
The 10th, the 10th, Joe.
The 10th, John and I will be attending for the township. Mr. Hemberder and Aaron's for the school district, and we're trying to get hold of Allison and St. Lawrence, bro, to discuss if they have any interest in working with the school district as well. The Reading Country Club, just again, the feedback, it's just fantastic. Rounds are now 800, about 800 over last year at this point in time. Revenue is up $23,000 over last year at this time. As a matter of fact, rounds for the month of July are 202 over the entire month. So Derek and his team are doing a great job. We have, if it's not going to be 100 degrees the next couple of days, we might get to 4,000 rounds for the month, which would be fantastic. And the only other thing is just hoping that within the next couple of meetings that we can start talking about the preliminary budget for next year and also to discuss possibly revisiting our current debt structure. Rates are probably as low as they're going to be. So I think we might be able to flatten out some of those years, like in the mid-2020s, where we have some higher amounts in there and take advantage of the lower interest rates and some savings. So that's it for me.
Thanks, John. Michelle?
Um, the only thing I have is to tell the police how much we appreciate all their work and being out there at these times. And let you know that I'm hearing a lot of good about what the police are doing, and they really appreciate you, all the whole team. And it's good to hear out in the, out throughout Exeter. That's all I have.
Thanks, Michelle. All right, Greg?
Yeah, I just want to share information about the Hackaway at Hunger Golf tournament and thank everyone who was a sponsor or a participant. We raised $15,700 for local food entries, which included 11,000, almost 11,000 for Exeter and almost 3,000 for Burke's Kukul helping harvest. So it just shows a lot about the community, how people stepped up and helped out even more so this year and probably because of the pandemic. But I also want to share a text with you that I got the day of the tournament in the evening from one of the volunteers who has helped me. She didn't help last year, but she's helped me about four or five years. So I'm going to just read her text because I think it's kind of indicative of what's going on at Reading Country Club. Before I forget, I wanted to tell you that every single person that drove past me today that worked at the club all had a smile and said good morning and were pleasant. It was refreshing and it didn't go unnoticed. I just, I think that's the type of feedback when you get. It's indicative of the job Derek and Brian are doing and creating a very strong culture there. So I wanted to make sure I shared that as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah, and I, just my comments, I just want to thank Jeff and his entire staff for, you know, getting us the information in timely fashion and moving things forward in these difficult, certainly, times. And just wish everyone to stay safe and we'll keep at it. So that's all I have.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
That was Michelle.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Everyone. Thanks, Laurie.